Good evening. Calling to order the meeting of the Arlington Select Board. It is October 10th, 2018, a little after 7:15 PM. With us all the way to my right is Selectman John Hurd, Selectman Joe Kuro. Directly to my right, I am Dan Dunn. To my left is Selectwoman Diane Mahon. And next to her is the birthday boy, Selectman Kevin Greeley. So happy birthday and happy anniversary to Kevin.
Thank you.
With us, we also have Town Manager Adam Chapdeline. We'll be joined shortly by Town Council Doug Heim. And also with Marie Kapelka, our Board Administrator. I often start meetings with a quote. And tonight's quote is from Boston Red Sox manager Alex Cora, who last night said, "That was fun." First item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. And we have a bunch of things on the consent agenda. Minutes of the meeting, September 24th, 2018. Lions Club iMobile Town Hall, Saturday, October 27th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. One-day beer and wine license at Town Hall for a private event. That was October 20th. Another October 20th private event at Town Hall. October 21st, private event at Town Hall. October 26th, AYCC Gala at Town Hall. Another beer and wine license Town Hall. October 27th, private event. Beer and wine license November 3rd for a private event. Beer and wine license for January 25th, 2019. Arlington Catholic High School for a 10K drawing. We have a one-day all-alcohol license for March 9th, 2019, Arlington Catholic High for Quiz Night. And we have appointments of new election workers. Thomas Reedy, Mary Ann Sullivan, and Martha Sefoulias, who I'm sure I mispronounced your last name, and I apologize.
Move approval?
Second.
Is there anyone here who wants to talk about any of the items on the consent agenda?
God bless you.
Seeing none. On a motion from Mrs. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Kuro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up, appointments. Community Preservation Committee, Charlie McCabe. Welcome. Why don't you come on up to the microphone here? And we've all read your resume. And I, of course, had a chance to interview you by phone when we did the interviews. Why don't you take the microphone, actually, exactly. Point it up a little bit yourself.
There we go.
Tell us just a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this committee.
Sure. By day, I work in the parks and open space world. I work for a national organization called the Trust for Public Land. We actually do house the Community Preservation Coalition as part of our office, but I have nothing to do with it. And mostly what I do is I research and work on park best practices across the United States. So I've had a long history in working on parks and open space work, as well as in the public realm. And real interested to see if I can help out with the great work that the Act is giving the town of Arlington and the opportunities that we have for start preservation, housing, and open space.
Questions?
Move approval?
Second.
Move with second. Mrs. Mahon's.
Well, thank you for doing this. And I also saw your resume, curriculum vitae, a couple of references to the Rose Kennedy Garden Conservatory, I'm not going to say area.
Greenway. Yeah, I worked there for about three and a half years.
Yes. And that has been such... To me, that's a very difficult space. And when I first heard about it, I was like, no way. Is this going to be visible or accessible or anything like that? And I know other people worked with you on this, but I really am impressed in terms of your experience.
Great, great group of folks, eight years in. So they're doing pretty good.
And I think that that experience you had with that will also play well here in Arlington. So I want to thank you very much for bringing your expertise in doing this appointment.
Have it help.
Kevin? And the fact that your usage on that went from 300, was it something, to over 2,000?
Two million, yeah.
You did something very well.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your willingness to help us here.
You bet. Absolutely. Have it help.
Mr. Kuro?
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank you, but say, Charlie and I have crossed circles in other realms. And he did share some work that he has done with an interactive app through TPL and some of the statistics on Arlington, which completely escaping my mind. What about the accessibility that we have to our parks? Mapping that out, I think you had work with our Park and Rec folks.
Yeah, it's actually National 10-Minute Walk to a Park Day today. And Arlington scores really high. It scores in the 90s. About 90% of the population over, it's like 94% are within a 10-minute walk to a park.
Thank you for that. I think that knowledge is great for...
94% of the population, what?
Are within a 10-minute walk to a park, given the compactness of Arlington and the parks that we've had for eons and the bike way.
Thank you. Excuse me, Joe.
Just thank you for your willingness to serve. Your resume is great, and you obviously have the experience to serve on this particular committee. I do see that you went to Colby. You do have two jumbos here, so I think we could put that aside in order to...
It's okay. I know several double jumbos. So, you know, and they remind me of that all the time, so...
I do want to say just generally to all the applicants that we had today, I won't say this for every one of them, but I was going through all the resumes of the people that choose to serve on these committees. I was in awe and frankly, a little bit intimidated by the caliber of people that we have in town. And, you know, I thank you for serving.
Pleasure. Thanks, guys.
Adam, do you have a vote on this?
I think I do.
I think you do.
Yeah.
Move approval?
We actually already have a motion from Mrs. Mahon, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Six, zero. Next up, Clean Energy Future Committee. Terms to expire, June 2021. Mark Brezlo, Coralie Cooper, Shelley Dean, Jim, James DiTullio, Ryan Kotofsky, and David Levy. All of you could come on up to the microphone, please. Let's see. And I'm going to welcome all of you, each and everyone. I'm going to invite you up one by one to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the community. There are definitely many familiar faces up there. It looks like we're missing one, and I have to figure out who that is. Mark, you're up first.
Hi, I'm Mark Brezlo. I've been working on energy and climate issues in Arlington since founding Sustainable Arlington in 1999. And I've spent most of the last 20 years working on climate change and believe it's the greatest threat facing the planet. And one way of getting at it is to start locally. Arlington's got a long history now for working on this, and I want to be part of helping us bring it further.
Thank you. Coralie, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Coralie Cooper. And I've worked for 20 years on the issues of sustainability and reducing greenhouse gases, both in the building sector and then also the automotive sector for the federal government, most recently for the U.S. Department of Transportation, and then previously for an association of state air pollution control programs. And I'm interested in working on the committee because, well, as Mark said, it's a very critical problem we're facing. And working at the local level is really important. And then also, I think the program has the potential to improve resiliency in Arlington and improve the buildings in Arlington, reduce greenhouse gases, and those things can be done at the same time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Shelley, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Shelley Dean. I am a 30-plus-year-old resident of Arlington. I didn't mean to imply that I'm 30 years old. I'm much older than that.
You're 25. You couldn't be a day over 25.
And I've been a homeowner and a landlord in Arlington for 25 years, in East Arlington. Professionally, I am the Energy and Sustainability Director for the City of Quincy and have spent my professional career really working on two primary issues, both energy efficiency and renewable energy, as well as multifamily affordable housing development. And I have been a member of Sustainable Arlington for quite a long time and a member of the Energy Working Group since its inception. And I hope to continue this work on this committee.
Thank you very much. Jim, welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Jim DiTullio, Abbot Town Meeting Member in Precinct 12. And I think you've all seen me before this board before. I'm really excited to serve in this committee. I'm not, and as I said when I interviewed with the Town Manager, I don't consider myself a subject matter expert on this, but it's something that is of great interest to me. And in my day job in state government at the State House, I handle a number of public policy portfolios. And climate change and energy has been one of those portfolios. I was deeply involved with the bill that passed the Senate and the House just this past session on an Act to Advance a Clean Energy Future. And I feel like this is really exciting work, probably one of the most exciting committees that is currently in town government. And I said to the Town Manager, it's an inaugural committee. So the people you put on this first batch really have to be committed to this and bring new ideas and really want to see this thing all the way through 2050, not just an idea that peters out in a few years and a committee that goes away. And I'm really excited to serve with this group of people. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Ryan, welcome.
Thank you. This is going to sound a little bit like a broken record. I'm Ryan Kotofsky. I've been living in Arlington for the past 20 years. And like Mark, I was a founding member of Sustainable Arlington in '99. I've been on the Energy Working Group since it was created, I think, back in 2010 or thereabouts. I've spent my entire professional career, the last 25 years, in clean energy in various ways. And, you know, they've said it all really well as to why this is important. You know, for me also, my family and I, we've been on a, call it a journey over the last many years, trying to reduce our own footprint. And I view this as a journey that I want to take with the town on this committee as well.
Thank you very much. So Board members, we're missing one, Dave Levy. And so I leave it to you for what motion to put forth.
I move to approve all of the recommended appointees with the request that Mr. Levy just come up here before the board.
Second.
Questions or comments from the board? The committee is stacked. That is my comment. Thank you all very much for your help. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Five, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, Elderly Disabled Tax Relief Fund Committee. Lillian Hartman, Jennifer Louis Forbes, and Ted Peluso. Lillian, you are up first. You can imagine what questions I'm going to ask you. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I'm Lillian Hartman. I'm an Arlington resident for about four years. I have a professional background in working with seniors as a volunteer director and also formerly the Assistant Director of the Belmont Council on Aging. I'm really interested in taxes and policy. I'm a nine- or 10-year volunteer tax preparer, so this felt like a great way for me to continue my interest in helping seniors while I'm home with my daughter. So I also can lend some time to the committee doing research because I'm at home.
All right. Thank you. Ted?
I'm Ted Peluso. I was recently informed that I'm now officially a senior. Accordingly, I've started getting a little active with the Council on Aging. And one of the things they asked if I'd be willing to serve on a committee where they give away some money. And that always sounds good to me. So I'll do the best I can, and that's it.
Thank you. Questions or a motion? I see, I don't see Jennifer here.
Move approval?
Of all three?
Of all three, but with the request that Ms. Louis Forbes come at the next meeting.
Second.
Second.
You can give it to Kevin.
I'll give it to Kevin.
It's his birthday.
Well, I'm the elder here.
It's your birthday. It's your birthday.
Aye. Again, thank you both for your volunteering. I mean, this has been a parade of people up to the microphone who are giving to the town, and we appreciate each and every one of you and what you're doing for us. So thank you very, very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you.
Next up, for approval, Common Victory alcohol license, Mini Punjab. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Could you introduce yourself? I think we met your client a couple weeks ago.
I'm Jeffrey Urson. I represent the plaintiff in this matter. An applicant, Mr. Mandev, and Smart Group LLC.
Could you come on up closer to the microphone? We have millions of people who watch at home, and they can't hear you.
We would like to address a few issues of concern to the board. We know that the board has raised an issue about the name. And in light of the issues raised and the concerns raised, we spoke with Mr. Heim, and we are willing to change the name. Would like to propose a new name, which would be Rangla Punjab. Rangla means colorful in Indian. Punjab, as you know, is a region in northern India. It's actually a state. It's got about 28 million residents. It's also a very popular culinary style of food. Many people call it an ethnicity. It's a dialect as well. It's a very commonly used name within the Commonwealth. There are scores of entities that have the name, including many restaurants and food service establishments. We do acknowledge that there were concerns with the name Mini, and we think that this is a fair resolution. Certainly with the word Rangla first, not Punjab first. That will make it very clear that this is very different than the entity across the street. We're here to address any other concerns or questions that the board may have. And any questions outside of this issue as well, we can address.
Thank you. Questions for the board? So seeing none, I'm going to, I generally wait for everyone else to go, but seeing none, I'm going to go. I definitely was concerned with Mini Punjab. I'm comfortable with the name as proposed. So now I'm actually going to move on to like what I would consider my regular questions about an alcohol license, which are... So we often find that new restaurants in town are really good at following the liquor, like checking IDs in the beginning. And then what happens is there gets to be a little bit of staff turnover. And especially in the smaller restaurants, there isn't necessarily a good training program set up. And the new hires end up being the ones who make mistakes. And so when there's, you know, when there's a hearing because someone has been served underage and where, you know, someone is standing at that microphone, what we often hear is, they were new, and I hadn't trained them yet. And so I wanted to understand what programs and thoughts you had about preventing that kind of problem going forward.
I'm going to ask my client to address that directly. This is the, this will be the third restaurant that he owns in the greater Boston area, so this is an issue that he's dealt with before on many occasions.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
So regarding the alcoholic safety, we will have all the staff tip certified. And we have two restaurants, as he already told you. So since, I have that from seven years. No issues, no tickets until now. When we hire the staff, the managers and assistant manager will be the tip certified. And when we hire the new staff, they train them how to check IDs and everything. So that's how we do it. So we hire tip-certified staff.
Do you have, for that training, do you have like any written materials or anything like that?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Okay, tell me about those.
We have the, like, we do the Serve Safe, their program. We do that. So we print those pamphlets, and we hand it over to the new staff so they can read how to do that. Because Serve Safe Alcohol is the best one we use these days.
Mrs. Mahon?
In terms of holding staff meetings, whether it's weekly, monthly, or et cetera, what we found is, which the chairman has kind of spoken about, is that it's usually when, you know, someone who you expect hasn't come in, you need to take someone who's busing or clearing or, you know, hostess or host, and you put them on the floor. And they're not covered by tips and Serve Safe. So what my question is, what training do you give to your managerial staff? Your manager, assistant manager, in terms of when they need to pull someone who's busing onto a server, is there a shadowing protocol, a shadowing system set up? That's when it happens.
So when we, as I said, when we have the tip-certified staff, so we have, when we hire somebody new, at least we have them shadow one to two weeks so they know how we do and how's everything.
But what I'm saying is, when this happens is when you have someone who basically is a buster. And they wouldn't get Serve Safe, and they're not tip-certified. And they get put on the floor to...
We usually don't put like stuff like that on the floor. But usually, like, in my place, like in other two restaurants, we have the people assigned who take care of the bar, like the manager and the assistant manager. So they take care and they check the IDs and all that. So we have the assigned people. Not everybody's serving the liquor on the floor.
Okay. So I'll just leave it to you to oversee that, because I know usually that doesn't happen. What happens is when businesses get a violation, unusual circumstances, and it's usually that case. So we just wanted to raise it to you, that this is what happens, so that you have something set in place where someone gets pulled out of their craft, whether you say they have to be shadowed or something else. You're telling me you have something in place for that?
Yes. Because as we, the place I have in Brookline, that's highly crowded by the students. They are mostly minors in that area. Like, we are on the 500 Harvard Street. It's crowded by the BU students and the BC all over. So we like, like since from last five years, we haven't had any issue because we follow that protocol, because make sure the manager and assistant manager take care of the liquor staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone here who wanted to talk about this one? Mr. Leone, how did I guess?
I'd just like to come and visit you guys. I'm here again with Corinda and just the owners of Punjab. The offer to change the name is good. The offer to change the name to Rangla Punjab is good, but they still have problems with that. I have an example. In the last 17 years since they've opened up, here, I'm going to approach for one second. You make a lot of copies because then we should have paper.
Sure. Pass down there.
60 Indian restaurants have opened in the greater Boston area that don't use the name Punjab. Punjab is not necessarily a food style. It is a state. They could call themselves Rangla India. They could call themselves Rangla India, serving Punjabi cuisine. It's the name Punjab that is bound to cause confusion here. When someone's going to Google Indian food in Arlington, Mass. Ave, it's going to come up with the two of them. They're going to see the name Punjab, and they're going to press the button, and they're going to get their restaurant instead of theirs. It's not the competition. It's the confusion, the closeness of the name is going to cause. As you'll see from this list, there are lots and lots of different names they can use besides Punjab. They could say Punjab, northern India. Punjab serving modern Punjabi food, modern Indian food. They don't need the name Punjab. That is their main concern here. Just as Punjab Vidika, which was the predecessor of Sab Singh, confusion. They lost, they lost business to them. They know that for a fact because people thought they were going to their restaurant, and they would go to the other one and then complain to them that they didn't like the food. So they know it happens. It's going to happen. It's going to cause problems for both restaurants, I think, if that name isn't changed to something else. They want the competition. They like the competition. It brings more people to Arlington. It's just going to be an issue down the road. And that's what they want to avoid. They would consent to go into Rangla. Anything else serving Punjabi-style food or modern Indian food or modern Punjabi food, it doesn't have to be in the name. So that's our one, that's our two cents.
Thank you.
Yes, Greeley. So, yeah, thank you. So you searched here who don't have, when you searched, how many did have the name Punjab in the title? This gentleman has two, so...
Well, he has two. He opened up his two restaurants very close to other Punjabi restaurants that have Punjab in the name. So it's a course of business for him to go into a neighborhood that already has a Punjab restaurant with that name and open his with the name Punjab with Shere in front of it. So one of them, the name was, means the King of India, the King of Punjab. The other's the Star of India. I forget the exact name. But it, it's trading on somebody else's name. It's trading on their goodwill. So there are other Punjab restaurants out there, but they didn't complain about any of them because they're not in spitting distance. They're not right across the street. And it's a course of action that the good gentleman has taken. And it's nothing wrong with being competitive in the United States. That's what we thrive on. But it's just real too close for comfort.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Comment or motion, questions? Mrs. Mahon?
I'm on the fence with this. And I'm trying to think of, you know, what I would sort of compare to that. And when I think of comparisons, I can see how you could delineate, make a distinction from them. Like, I think Penzi Spices, and if somebody opened across the street and said Penzi Ingredients, but then you can say, well, Penzi isn't a region, like Punjab is a reason, a region. But I'm also trying to weigh the fact that, you know, if these two businesses, one's in the center and one's in East Arlington or one's on Broadway, but where they're right across the street from each other, that's where I'm literally really on the fence with this. I'm sort of leaning towards, I understand from both sides their passion for having the, or their desire for having the Punjab name in their restaurant, but I'm also trying to balance that they are directly across the street from each other or will be if it is approved. And I was hoping when we got to this point that there would be some resolution that, you know, both sides would recognize and come to a compromise, and I don't see that. So that's what I'm saying to my colleagues. If you can kind of, like, I'm literally on the fence about this. One is proximity, same name. I know I use the Penzi Spices analogy, but you could say, well, that's really not an analogy because Penzi is a name versus a region or a place. So I'm kind of stuck.
Tom?
I had said last time this came before us that it wasn't the name Punjab. It was the name Mini that really had me hung up. And if you came back and said Mini Punjab, then it would have been a no. I'm convinced, based on the research that we've done, what we've seen, that, you know, I don't think, and it's also, we have two other stores with the name Punjab in it. So it's a course of action that this is the type of store, and it's the names that they use in their restaurants. So I think the amended name is sufficient. Without the Mini is what was really holding me up. I, you know, I think the name Punjab seems to be important to the type of business that they run. And I think, you know, it's common enough, it's not that common, but it's common enough that, you know, I wouldn't come in here and tell them that they had to take that out of there, have the only restaurant of their entire chain that doesn't have Punjab in it. You know, I think they're at least coming to the table with, looking to negotiate here. And I think the amended name is much better than at least what was put before us before.
Greeley?
Yeah, well, I mean, you know where I was last time. I mean, I have, I have a hard time thinking, we can tell a business what it's allowed to name itself. But I agree with their willingness to remove Mini. You know, I think the argument could be made, John made the argument about Punjab restaurant getting complaints about the food from another restaurant with the name Punjab. Well, the argument could be made, this new restaurant opens and has great food. Maybe that sends business across the street. And the one across, the one that exists is an excellent business with an excellent reputation. And, you know, I, you know, I made the argument. It's like only one, one business can name themselves Arlington. That's crazy to think of that, you know? So I think, you know, the fact that they have compromised here and changed the first name, I certainly would support this myself.
Mr. Kuro?
Struggling with it too. I don't want to see the storefront go empty. I do have a question, though. Is it your intention to change anything about the menu from what it currently is? Because you're taking over an existing establishment.
So our menu will be that same menu we have on other two places, exact same. We're not taking anybody else's menu. We will putting the same exact menu.
You're not taking Sab Singh's menu?
No. Same exact menu I have on my other two places. Even those two places has the similar menu.[1702.83] So we're not, like, it will be the same thing we're doing in the other places.
So, I mean, I continue to have some, some concern, but I, I think I'm going to grudgingly support it. I appreciate the effort in trying to find a more distinctive name. I'm not happy about it, but I, but I'll grudgingly support the application.
So I move to approve.
Subject to?
Subject to all conditions I set for.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Lued by Mr. Greeley, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Five zero. Welcome to Arlington, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Next up, Citizens Open Forum. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted upon nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. Should be noted that there is a three-minute time limit to present a concern or request. Ms. Shailu.
Lo.
Shailu, I apologize, I should.
Shailu.
Shailu, I've.
It's okay. So I'm back again, I was here two and a half weeks ago, I invited emails or phone calls, I had none. So, I'm going to begin, I have not timed myself, so whoever is keeping time, just cut me off, I'll mark it, and I will continue two weeks from now. On March 30th, 2016, Arlington's Kickstand Cafe was robbed. My future daughter-in-law, Leica Myblum, was the manager on duty. She worked in the cafe to earn money, to pay her student loans while she was developing her art, this being her first year after graduating from the School of the Museum of Fine Arts with a BFA. Three other people were working with her in the cafe that night. At closing time, a masked individual robbed the business, spraying something into Leica's face that caused her eyes to tear and sting. Following their training, employees exited the cafe quickly. While out front, however, Leica realized that only two of the three employees had exited with her. As she went back to make sure the woman washing dishes was okay, she saw the robber leaving and without thinking started to chase after him.
Oh, I apologize, but I had tried to set a timer and I've.
Yeah, that was, I thought I would get down at least to the end of this page, okay. She saw the robber leaving without thinking, okay. She saw him get into the car and speed away. She was still some distance from him, but was able to recognize the type of car or something close to it, though not able to get a plate number. When the police arrived, Leica gave them the information she had. It was enough for them to question and arrest a person whom Leica had thought was her friend, a former employee of the cafe who had actually worked there before her, but who had been let go the previous summer while she was visiting her family in Tokyo. It was only slowly, as events unfolded, that Leica came to understand that this friend, Eric Broder, was the one who had robbed the cafe and attacked her in the process. To say that the evening was becoming surreal for her would be a bit of an understatement, but that's when things took a turn. Broder, under police questioning, asserted that Leica was the mastermind of the robbery. She planned it, made him do it, he said, and the police would find incriminating texts on her phone. They took both Broder and Leica to the station, which was undergoing renovations at the time, and they handcuffed Leica to a desk in an open-air garage without her coat while they questioned Broder. Leica was cold and shivering, but it was only after quite some time, and quite reluctantly, that the officer watching her gave Leica her coat. So I guess this is enhanced interrogation, Arlington-style. And then the one female officer in this whole cabal felt it was appropriate during her watch to insinuate that Leica was sleeping around, saying something about having a fiance and a boyfriend on the side. So what was this offensive and uncalled-for remark meant to do? Humiliate Leica? Intimidate her? What was that officer thinking? You know, the mother in me asks, how dare she? But these days, the feminist in me wants to get up in her face and say, get woke. I mean, unbelievable. Now, Leica, who rightfully considered herself the hero of the night, without, without her information, the cops would not have turned to this kid. She was really confused about what was happening. The police asked if they could see her phone, she provided it to them. And as we saw in an evidence packet, that they provided one year later. They dragged this out for one year.
You're hitting your time.
Well, there were many, many, many appearances in that district court later. As we saw in the packet, they found no incriminating texts on the phone. They found that almost immediately. Are we getting to the end of our three minutes?
You've extended your time, could you please wrap it up?
Okay. Well, I'll just stop there. They found no incriminating texts on the phone. We didn't know that for one year. I'll be back in two weeks if nobody emails me or calls me. S underscore Shailo at MSN dot com.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who is here for the open forum?
And I just want to say, I did tell Sharon that I would call her, and it's my fault that I haven't done that, and I will endeavor to do that by the end of the week. My fault, sorry, but I will.
Can I have your select phone?
I will.
You're one of five.
No, no, I said I would, it's my fault, so I will, but thank you.
And I apologize, I truly do.
And I also apologize for the interruption, it was.
No, 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 we won't interrupt, yeah.
No, but the bells were, they were, they were a mistake.
Send me back.
All right, next up, traffic rules in order. Request for two spaces on street overnight parking, 176, 178 Medford Street. Bonnie Duncan.
I'd like to, subsequent to the correspondence we received from the Traffic and Parking Unit, recommend no action.
Seven.
Mr. Carroll wins that one. All right, motion from, is there any discussion? Motion from Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Carroll. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Five zero. Next up, discussion vote, letter to FCC opposing changes to PEG access funding. Mr. Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you have before you two draft letters that seek to address recent proposed changes to the way in which franchise fees are calculated by the FCC, for the purposes of our cable negotiations. We have three cable franchises in Arlington. The proposed rule would essentially deduct the value of quote-unquote "in-kind contributions", meaning the value of channels that our cable providers provide to ACMI, the value of certain technology, potentially things like fiber that they provide to our schools for the purposes of studios and things of that nature, from what they financially contribute to the town, both generally speaking, and specifically reserved for our PEG access provider. So this could have a potentially devastating impact on both ACMI, and it could have a significant impact on the town as well, because there's some finance, some, some amount of that franchise fees goes to the town that does not go to ACMI. And at this point, what we can do is request that the MMA submit comment and testimony to the FCC on behalf of all 351 Massachusetts communities. We can also submit a direct comment to the FCC, which is why you'll see two letters. I'd also note that there is one other piece, one other item that I did not address in the letter because I felt that the MMA had sufficiently addressed it. There's another rule change that the FCC is considering with respect to what's called small cell antennas, that basically redo, basically eliminate our ability to collect permit fees and drastically, virtually make it impossible for us to oppose those installations, even though you are the arbiters of public ways. The MMA has already submitted testimony on that front. I don't know that the prognosis for either one of these things is good. The FCC, without trying to make a political judgment here, has, in the last couple of years, shown themselves to be quite, has pursued, regardless of public comment, rule changes that they had promised to explore and make in a number of settings. So net neutrality, or there's a couple of other examples that folks can think of, despite heated debate about these subjects, the FCC has pursued them anyway. So I welcome any comments or changes. I did notice a typo in one of the letters, I apologize for that, I'll certainly address that. But I'm also happy to beef up these letters with further data, anything the Board of Select, the Select Board deems appropriate. Adam, did you want to add anything on the front? I know that Norm MacLeod and John Leone, who are also here, would like to speak to the issue as well.
You really do like us, John.
I love you guys. Practice. John Leone, President of ACMI. We read Doug's letters, they're good letters. We also ask that if you would direct him to also send them to our members of Congress, both branches, for them to pressure the FCC, because the proposals that he has, the FCC is making would drastically cut into our funding, both the 5% and the franchise fee to go to the town, and affect the town's ability to, like Doug said, determine where they're going to hang these new small cell towers everywhere. We would lose our ability to, as a town, to get any funding and revenue from that, and to tell them they can't do it in some ugly place. But it's obviously our concern is the, and Norm will address it as well, is the 5% funding fee and the in-kind kickback, which they have not said how much any of those in-kind things are worth, it's just kind of an open-ended question, I think, for the providers to determine. And that would cause a lot of financial difficulties for Norm in running the business. Yeah?
Yeah. I'd like, I'd like to thank town manager and council for developing a beautiful letter. It went right to the issues, summarized it beautifully, and I'll let you know that all the other access stations in the area are obviously very upset about this. We know that right now, that Comcast, Verizon, and RCN are recalculating how they actually give us funding. I think they're doing it by, I just found out about this yesterday, they're doing it by a GAAP, I think it's called, is that right? Yeah. So the other stations on ourselves, we're going to be losing probably anywhere from 46% income because they've changed that. Now we have three providers who are basically extensions of Verizon, RCN, and Comcast sitting on the FCC, making these sorts of decisions. And we know that the providers really do not, for years, really didn't want to provide this sort of, you know, facility to any of the towns. That's why we became a nonprofit organization in 2006. So I know that the input that I've got, it says that some of the, the folks in my community, in the mass access community, are saying, the way this is going to go, this is going to go down, this is going to happen. So the more support we can get, all of us in this area, to support community access, and to make sure that you have the ability to say yea or nay to whatever instrument is going to be hanging from your poles, the more support we get, the better off we'll be. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I think I should explain one of the thing that Norm and John reminded me of, for the purposes of our folks here from the media. The argument that is being made before the FCC is essentially that by deducting the value of in-kind contributions, it will encourage competition and open the marketplace to more cable companies. What is particularly unavailing, from my perspective, about that, is that here in Arlington, we have three cable companies, we're not short on competition, and the, this all takes place in the context where cable revenue that goes into this franchise fee, this 5%, is only cable, does not include internet service, which is increasingly what more and more people are basically using their cable provider for. So as people quote-unquote "cut the cord," their gross revenues are already decreasing from the perspective, and therefore that 5% and the franchise fee overall is unpredictable and potentially going to be lower over time. The idea that these in-kind contributions, with some of our partners, Comcast, RCN, and Verizon, are more than, we're more than happy to provide without being a difficult point of the negotiation in terms of HD channels or electronic program guides, is not been, not been true for our experience.
Ms. Mahan.
Please correct me if I'm not interpreting this appropriately. My question would be, and if my question is not based on fact, why is internet service not included in the definition of cable revenue?
That's an, that's an excellent question. Why? Because they don't want it to be. The definition was set probably at a time before internet was prominently featured by our cable providers, and over time, they just haven't included it, and you'll see that the price of your cable package, price of that internet piece keeps going up, even as sometimes cable stays steady.
I have a follow-up question, but is there any way you would, either one of you or both would answer that? Because then I'm going to have a follow-up.
Doug got it right. The definition of cable revenues pre-existed the internet from probably the 50s or 60s, and the FCC set what it was at that point, set the ability for a town to collect on behalf of the PEG access station between 0 and 5%. We've been fortunate in getting 5%, but strictly at the cable television revenues, which would include HBO, et cetera, et cetera, but not internet and not any other services you buy from your RCN, Comcast, if not the telephone portion, anything like that.
I saw the town manager, I didn't know if you wanted.
I'll correct.
And so my follow-up question to that would be, and I understand the two positions that are sort of posited here, are we really even addressing that in terms of the statement that we're making, and if we're not, is that something we should?
You would have to change your FCC board entirely to a cable-friendly, PEG access-friendly group, which I think would require a total change of administration. I think they're appointed for tenure terms.
Tenure.
Yeah, tenure terms, non-impeachable, et cetera, unless they do something really bad. So we're stuck with this board until they're done, and hopefully we have a friendly administration who would appoint cable-friendly folks. So we're stuck with that definition.
Ms. Mahan, I'm certainly happy to stress the point further, that this, you know, narrow definition of cable revenue is.
I mean, any, anything you can sort of elucidate on that point? Because to me, that's kind of seems one of the crux of the matters in terms of.
Well, that is actually something we as a board and executive producer are worried about, if people cut the cable and keep internet, we, we're going to see a revenue decrease that we'll have to deal with one way or another, and that's just inevitable.
And then my other question would be, and I'm not sure if I'm phrasing this appropriately, because I'm just doing it from my limited knowledge, this is not my expertise, but in terms of the cable franchise fee order, and I understand we have three cable franchisees that this would apply to, and I understand what we're sending here in terms of our statement, but am I missing it in here in terms of, I can't remember how it was phrased to us, but it was basically talking about a cable franchise fee order, the way it's outlined and defined, the three cable franchise operators that we have, and our statement basically saying, and this is what I'd like sort of some explanation, amplification on, saying that as it stands right now, I think it was something like, this current order would eviscerate, let me see, I wrote it down, would, what did I put? I know, I remember seeing the word eviscerate, which I could go in like 10 different ways, eviscerate our community media provider in terms of negotiating fair terms for themselves. So if I could just get a little more explanation on that, because, you know, when I read into that, I can take it like three different ways, so.
Sure.
And I apologize if I'm paraphrasing it incorrectly.
Ms. Mahan, we're essentially, if I may, Mr. Chair, we're essentially trying to emphasize the point that ACMI would be the most dramatically impacted by these cuts, and they provide an essential and wonderful service to this community. The town would also be detrimentally impacted by the decrease in franchise fees, but that 5% would hit ACMI particularly hard, the change in the way that's calculated.
So far.
I can clarify that that's what I was talking about in terms of who is getting eviscerated.
Yes, if I may, what they're proposing is, they provide cable to all the town buildings, fiber to the town buildings, they provide us with HD and regular channels, they would be able to put a dollar value on those services and directly reduce the amount that they sent to us via that 5%. And it's been nowhere explained how they would arrive at those dollar values that they randomly or arbitrarily sign to those services. So that would, what would affect us on this side, because we'd be, in effect, come out of our budget to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin.
Yeah, so I move that we voice support, and once we've written that, we direct our chairman to sign it on behalf of this board, and that we include it be sent to the entire legislative delegations.
Second. Motion seconded, sir, further discussion?
No, I guess I would leave it on the table until this runs its course, but when it gets to the point, five, eight years out, in terms of the internet service not being included in the definition of cable revenue, that will be addressed in the future, not as part of this motion, but I think the point certainly has been made.
One battle at a time.
All right, sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Five zero.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Come again. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Maury.
Next up, so the town manager emailed me last week, and he said, Dan, the agenda is pretty light, what should we talk about? And I said, let's talk about long-range planning.
That's really exciting.
Yeah.
The chairman said the board would definitely not want to leave at 8:00 PM.
No.
So let's, do you want to add any intro, or do you want me to jump right in?
I just, I guess I will, yeah. So, I mean, as this board is well aware, we are in advanced planning for a high school and a new high school.
and a new high school, or renovated high school, or some combination thereof. And we will, we're plan on asking the voters for a debt exclusion sometime next year, in the spring, on the current calendar. And we also know that we, our revenues grow slower than our expenses and that we periodically need operating overrides. And we've been, we're in what, the eighth year of a three-year plan at this point. And so, I just think it is really helpful for us as a board to, you know, keep ourselves knowledgeable about it. And also frankly, this is, you know, for people at home and for the press to talk about it. And at our last town meeting in April, the town manager, you know, we obviously had a very intense conversation about the budget as we always do. And the town manager also talked about potential override scenarios at that point. And here we are six months later, and I thought it made sense for people to, you know, hear where we were six months later.
Can I ask a brief question in the beginning? And I apologize by asking this question, I'm really messing things up or misconstruing something. But I know last time when we had a major school renovation rebuild effort, reimbursement was at about thirty-seven percent. Please correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of everything that's been submitted, getting past phase one, MSBA, it was my interpretation that it was projected, recognizing that nothing is guaranteed and things can change, that, I mean, I was hoping for thirty-seven percent, or thirty-seven cents on the dollar, but from what I was reading, I saw forty-five percent. Am I incorrect in that, in terms of current...
So, you are correct. So, the actual MSBA reimbursement rate that we're receiving right now for the monies we're spending on the feasibility study is forty-five point one-one percent. We expect that when we receive our final percentage, we will receive several incentive points for both building a sustainable building as well as for submitting our capital and asset maintenance plan. So, we think we could get up to forty-seven or forty-eight percent. That'll be determined next spring when we come to a final budget number and we sign a project, project scope and budget agreement with the MSBA. That's when we'll get our final reimbursement number. Where there starts to become a difference in the number, and this might be what, the number you're recalling from the Thompson School project, is there is what they call our reimbursement rate, which is, again, those numbers I just quoted. But then ultimately, at the end of the project, there's what's known as the effective reimbursement rate, because every dollar that you spend often on these school projects is not reimbursable. So, there's sort of the top-line reimbursement rate, that is what your reimbursable expenses are reimbursed at. And then, there's your total project budget, which has some percentage of things that are not reimbursable. So, we don't know this yet, but our initial calculations suggest that the high school effective reimbursement rate could be down in that thirty-five, thirty-seven percent range, as you just mentioned. So, to some degree, those numbers seem like there's a dissonance, but they actually do make sense with what our stated reimbursement rate will be and what we think our effective reimbursement rate will be. And just to give you an example of what that, what that means, so, in, as it's currently being discussed, we're talking about building more gym and athletic space than what the MSBA will reimburse. We're maxing out what they will allow us to build, but more than what they'll actually reimburse. So, when we build those extra square feet, I think it's sixteen thousand five hundred extra square feet, the town has to pay for all of those square feet and doesn't get reimbursed. So, when that starts to be factored into the calculation, what our effective reimbursement rate is, goes down. And there's a series of things that are similar to that gym and phys ed space that I just described. So, I'm probably going on too long if...
No, and if I could ask a follow-up question on that, just because when I've been speaking to voters, the thirty-seven percent on previous projects and this possible forty-five percent, and I'm not holding anyone to that because I understand things could change, if it is forty-five versus thirty-seven or some other number, and this is questions that people have asked me, is it because the reason why there may be two differences in the number, the amount of projects in a simple mathematical division equation, or is it because more of, I think what you just previously stated in terms of what it is that we want to do at the high school, what can be reimbursable? If we go by MSBA guidelines, we could possibly get closer to forty-five percent, if not more or less. Or is it just basically when we got the thirty-seven percent, there were a hundred projects, and if we get the forty-five percent this time, that's because there's eighty-five? Do you know what I'm saying?
It's definitely the latter. It is not the MSBA reducing it based on lack of available funds. It's based on the local choices that are made and what's reimbursable and what's not reimbursable.
Okay. And then, my last question to that would be, in keeping the Thompson School experience in mind, I'm sure we're going to be extremely diligent, vigilant, whatever end word we want to use, in terms of maximizing the reimbursement that we do get from MSBA to phase one into phase two plans that are submitted and really adhering to that and not making a major cost change in that. So, my question would be, it's really not this board directly, that if for some reason, like what happened at the Thompson, there was a major cost change, which resulted in a certain part of Thompson being rebuilt, the town school had to bear a hundred percent because it didn't go originally with what MSBA approved. If we were to go down that road again, it really wouldn't be this board of select, this select board. It's really the onus is on the school committee. And A, is that correct? And B, what sort of safeguards do we have in place? Or does the school and the administration have in place that we don't repeat the Thompson issue?
I guess I'd answer that in two different ways. We do have some concerns. We fought really hard with the MSBA over the course of several months going on almost two years ago now to set the enrollment figure at one thousand seven hundred fifty-five. The current population's about twelve hundred students at the high school. So, we, and fight is an accurate word, we really did have to, I think we had three separate meetings at the MSBA to try to convince them of where we thought our enrollment projections would be. And with kindergarten classes coming in that are quite large now, we think that's been very much legitimizing the concerns we expressed to the MSBA. That said, the seventeen fifty-five number is not actually the number of available seats or classrooms. That dictates how many homerooms you build. So, the seventeen fifty-five goes into a calculation that defines how many classes that can, or just classes that are general classrooms are built. You still will build extra upon that. You'll build science classrooms, you'll build art classrooms and other specialty classrooms above and beyond that. So, they build it, the MSBA builds it that way, so that if you, if you build for seventeen fifty-five, but you have several years where you go above that, there will be room in the building to house it. They want you to build to a number that you think is going to be your population over the long term, over the ten- or twenty-year term after you complete the building. So, I think we have some degree of confidence that there is space to grow based on surges in the enrollment, once the school is open. Additionally, one thing we're still working on is whether or not we keep district administration in the high school. And there is cost concern about including in the high school, but there would certainly be costs associated with moving it out of the high school. But the argument that I have found most compelling about keeping district administration in the high school is, it would give us additional square footage built into the high school, should there be enrollment beyond what the building can contain. We could quickly turn that and probably quite affordably turn that into classroom space without having to put an expansion on to the high school. So, those decisions haven't been finalized yet, we're still working through them. But I think we have a fairly good hand around what to do should enrollment go beyond what we think. That said, in terms of who the onus would fall on, should there ever be some need to expand high school capacity, I think we'd have to start right from scratch again and go through a process like we did at the Thompson to figure out what the right strategy is.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Time well spent. Kevin?
Can I, what is, district, what is district administration? You mean the superintendent's office?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, and that includes the business office, payroll, human resources, special education. So, it's a bit, it's quite a large office footprint.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm all done.
All right, Adam, you're on.
Sorry.
So, I really want to talk about two things based on what Dan said tonight. I want to walk through the most up-to-date long-range financial projection, and then I'm going to ask Sandy to talk about some of the override scenarios that, as Dan said, I described verbally at a town meeting last year. I think the prevailing wisdom had been, and I think this came out at town meeting last year, to consider asking for both a debt exclusion and potentially an operating override next spring. And when we met with the Long Range Planning Committee last week, that was really sort of the meat of this discussion, is whether or not that's still the right choice. So, I think certainly no decisions have to be made tonight or even very soon, but I hope that this conversation can get the board to start to think about its thoughts on that matter, because ultimately, as you all know, the board is the body that would decide whether or not to put a ballot question on the ballot next, next spring. So, to start, I'll probably give you more detail than you might like to have, but I think for, for those watching at home, and I think as a refresher, it'd be good to give a little bit of detail on the long-range plan. So, I'll start, I'll start at the top, if you have the sheets in front of you, on your iPads. We have FY nineteen, which is the current fiscal year we're in, that's all the way to the far left. And then FY twenty, which we're projecting for, for next year, which would start next July first. And then, we have the out-years going beyond that, all the way up through FY twenty twenty-four on this document. So, at the top of the page, we project our revenues. Starting about a third of the way down the page, we start to project our appropriations. And that's how we calculate where we think we will be in terms of whether we're making a deposit into the override stabilization fund or needing to withdraw funds from the override stabilization fund. As you can see in FY nineteen, that was the, actually, you can't tell here, but I can tell you, that was the first year in this plan that we made a withdrawal from the override stabilization fund rather than making a deposit. So, starting with those revenues, the first line is state aid. That's the money we receive on the cherry sheet from the Commonwealth. We estimate that both chapter seventy and unrestricted general government aid will go up by one percent a year, and that goes all the way across the top of the plan. It shows as point nine eight percent because there's smaller accounts on the cherry sheet that we don't inflate, veterans reimbursements, charter school reimbursement, school lunch reimbursement. We keep those flat and just reimburse the two very large accounts, chapter seventy and UGA, and that's why that calculation looks, looks like that. Below that is school construction aid. That's the money that we receive from the old school building assistance program when it was called the SBAB, where they would give us money as we paid down the debt, they would pay us their share of the debt, whereas now they pay us in real time when we're paying the bills, so that we don't receive payments like that anymore. As you can see, there's actually only three years, including this year, left of payments under that old program, and then all of those bonds will be paid off. Below that is local receipts. That's the bulk of the money we collect as revenue that is not property tax-based. It's almost fifty percent, if not more than fifty percent, motor vehicle excise tax. Below that, then, building permits, licenses, other permit fees that we charge, hotel, motel, meals taxes, all included in that line item. We inflate that year-over-year by a hundred thousand dollars. Several years ago, we were using a fifty thousand dollar increment. We then bumped it to a seventy-five thousand dollar increment, and now we're at this hundred thousand dollar increment year-over-year for local receipts. Below that, we have free cash. The town's had a longstanding policy of appropriating fifty percent of its certified free cash as an operating revenue. So, you can see that's what we did in FY nineteen. We appropriated half of the nine point one million dollars in free cash. That's highlighted at the bottom of the page. Our free cash for this year is currently at the DOR. We expect it to be certified very soon. So, we're just, for this, purposes of this projection, estimating that we'll receive the same amount. So, you can see that number's carried forward. Along the bottom of the page, what we use for the rest of the projection is the ten-year average of our free cash certification and then carry forward fifty percent up to the top. So, it's to hedge against any potential downward, downward movement in our free cash certification. Below that, we have our overlay reserve surplus, two hundred thousand dollars a year. That, that's when we ask the assessors if they have any surplus funds available from the overlay we set aside. And annually, we ask them to set aside at least two hundred thousand if they have it available in surplus. We do have a nuance this year in overlay that I'll mention now. When the Municipal Modernization Act passed a couple of years ago, they allowed us to combine all of our overlay accounts into one. Used to be each year had its own account, so the assessors had to account for any abatements or outstanding appeals before the appellate tax board in each individual fiscal year. Those are all rolled now into one account, and there's just about, just about five million dollars now in that overlay surplus fund, or overlay fund. So, we want to start a conversation with the assessors to determine what they think out of that fund could be surplus, now that we're done with appeals from Verizon over their, their assets and their infrastructure. We think we could probably turn somewhere between three and three and a half million dollars back to the general fund. And the Long Range Planning Committee talked about what the most strategically beneficial manner of using those funds would be. And we'll continue to talk about that and see what we ultimately recommend to the town to do with those funds. The next line is property tax. That's obviously the biggest revenue we receive. What we do is each year, we add the two and a half percent growth that's allowed under proposition two and a half. We assume new growth in a descending fashion. What we've done for FY nineteen, we had budgeted six fifty, but based on information from the assessors, we bumped that up to a million dollars in new growth for FY nineteen. But then, moving over to FY twenty, we budgeted at six fifty. In FY twenty-one, we go down to six, and then down to five fifty, and then down to five, and then down to four fifty in a descending fashion. And as time goes on, we'll continue to bump those numbers forward and then roll them down, so that we hedge against economic downturns in the future and not sort of over-pump up our revenues. Within that property tax number is all of the exempt debt we raise for the monies that are debt-excluded, as well as the five and a half million dollars for the MWRA debt shift. It's all collected in that property tax line item. Below that, I already mentioned the override stabilization fund. What you see up here at the top of the revenues is what we think we'll need to use every year to withdraw from the override stabilization fund to keep the budget balanced. You see a number there all the way through FY twenty-two, and you don't see a number there in FY twenty-three, because at that point, the fund has been completely drawn down and there's no funds available, or no funds left in the override stabilization fund. Before I go down to expenses, any questions about revenue?
Just, I don't know if it's about revenue, but court judgment and Sims, I'm wondering why, it's because I don't know, we have the amount pretty much the same for Sims and judge, court judgments to FY twenty-three, it's like seven hundred thousand, then it goes down to a hundred thousand. Why is Sims, I'm attributing the fact that as of FY twenty-four, Sims no longer is an issue. My thing is why, is that correct, that that's what's driving that number up until FY twenty-three to seven hundred thousand? And why are we carrying that amount of Sims that far out?
So, you are correct. So, what you see there are two things, the Sims debt service payment and then a hundred thousand dollars for court judgments that we set aside every year. The debt service for the Sims property is retired in that FY, in FY twenty-three, so we only have those remaining years to pay this debt service for Sims. What happens is, we collect tax revenues from the Sims property. That shows up in that top line, but then we account for that money that we take out from the Sims, put it into the urban renewal fund that was established for the Sims property, and then pay the debt service with that. But we account for it in that line item.
So, that's my thing. I didn't realize we were that far out with Sims to FY twenty-three, but we are. And then, it's not revenue again, but in terms of pensions, and I know that there's been a statewide goal and previous treasurer had a goal, and I've heard, you know, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three being fully funded, where are we with that? Because I'm just looking at the numbers there, and it doesn't even look like we're close on that. Are we still pushing that out to like twenty thirty, twenty thirty-four?
Yes, we're, I think we're at twenty thirty-six right now. And we have an agreement with the retirement board that probably is worth having an updated conversation with them, because it's several years old now, probably three or four years old, of not letting what year we think will be fully funded slip any further, but trying to maintain the pension appropriation at only a five and a half percent increase every year. And they've been able to maintain that so far, because over the past four, five years, the stock market has had good returns and the pension portfolio has had good returns, which allows them to balance the assets and not increase it at a much higher rate, or a higher rate than five and a half percent. Today was a bad day in the stock market. I don't know what this year will look like, but I think on a year-over-year basis, we need to continue to work with them to see if we can continue that balance of controlling cost increases year-over-year while keeping that payment schedule on track.
So, when you say, last question I promised, we need to have this conversation in recognizing that the retirement board sort of reconfigured their investments and their investment strategy at the Will of Town meeting and others, and FinCom in terms of how those investments were parlayed out.
Two thousand and seven or eight, when they took it out of the private stuff and they put it into PERAC.
Yes, yes. When you say, and I'm not saying it in a negative way, you know, we need to have the conversation. Who is the we? Like, who's going to, going to do that and make that action plan happen?
Historically, it's been myself and Charlie Foskett as vice chair of the Finance Committee to meet with the retirement board and the retirement administrator to, to basically talk to them about what the town's goals are, learn from them what their goals are... to them about what the town's goals are, learn from them what their goals are, and see where we can meet in the middle. So I would imagine it would be the same group again.
Okay, so I'll leave that for town manager goals when you define it, when that should happen. It's just that it comes up a lot in terms of people have said to me, oh, you know, pensions are supposed to be fully funded by twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. I didn't know the year, and now it's gone out. But I agree with you that when you and Mr. Foskett and anybody else deems it appropriate to kind of recognizing other things could happen, maybe get a bigger handle on that so that we do have the goal and we're, not that we're not, but that we're striving to that. Because people have asked me that question, and I just have said to them, which is my fault, I really just have no idea. So now we're sort of looking at twenty thirty-four, is that what you said?
I said six.
Twenty thirty-six.
I have to be respectfully, I don't think, there's never been a time where twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-three, at least in the past twenty years, was a feasible number.
Yeah, there was, after the crash in two thousand and eight, we did change, like the actuary tables changed and our target changed, and we did reset the target to twenty thirty-six in two, it was like in like oh nine, or I forget exactly when the report was that we actually changed it. And so if you look back before that, if you look at what our target year was in two thousand and seven, it might have been twenty thirty or something. But in my experience from finance committee to board of selectmen, we've only changed the date once that I know of, according to my memory, anyway.
That sounds accurate.
And we changed it because of oh eight.
All right. I'll jump into expenses. Okay. So the first set of expenses we have are education appropriations. You can see we have that broken down into four categories. We have our general education costs, special education costs, kindergarten fee offset, and growth factor. So there's quite a bit happening in the calculation here. So annually, the general education costs are inflated by three and a half percent, and that's one of the initial tenants of the long range plan back in two thousand and eleven. Below that, the special education costs are inflated by seven percent. The kindergarten fee offset dates back to when we stopped charging the kindergarten fee but received a requisite amount back in chapter seventy, and we've accounted for that nine seventy, which was the amount that was calculated on a flat basis year over year. We've somewhat regularly talked about just rolling that up into the general education number, and I think it's probably ripe time that we do that just to reduce any confusion here. Growth factor is what we added, I think, going on four or five fiscal years ago now to acknowledge and to account for the enrollment growth. So when the override was passed in two thousand and eleven, there really wasn't any anticipation for the amount of enrollment growth that we've seen in the school district. So after the close of the first three-year period, the school department came to the town and basically said that they needed more funds than what the plan was allocating to meet up with the needs of the surging and growing enrollment. So we came up with this formula called growth factor, where we took a certain percentage of the state's certified per pupil expenditures, multiplied the number of new students by that number, and then put it into the growth factor line. So what we're at now, you can actually see it all the way down at the bottom of the page. We take thirty-five percent of the most recently certified, which in this case is FY seventeen, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's per pupil cost, which is fourteen thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars, which, and so that thirty-five percent of that is five thousand sixteen dollars. We multiply that by the enrollment growth, and that's how we get growth factor. And then we do that year over year based on what we think the enrollment projections are. What we do, and this will explain why the general education costs look like they're growing faster than three and a half percent. So in FY nineteen, you'll see growth factor was eight thirty-one. For FY twenty, we roll the eight thirty-one up into general education and then inflate all of that by three and a half percent, which is what shows that larger percentage growth up there. And then we do that every year over the course of the plan because if those students are still there, those costs need to be carried forward and inflated as general education costs are inflated. So you can see the net school budget goes up by a pretty significant percentage every year, especially as compared to many other communities in the state, and is frankly, though, according to the school department, still struggling to meet up with the demands of the surging enrollment. I guess, do you want to pause on that? I feel like I've started a couple.
Yeah, so the growth factor, eight thirty-one, nine eighty.
Yes.
You said, next year goes up into the general education costs. Did I understand that?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So next year, we're expecting a million seventy-eight in new growth.
Yes.
Okay. And that's going up into the general costs the following year, twenty-one.
Correct.
So we're expecting less new growth in twenty-one.
So if you go down, what's happening mathematically, if you go to the bottom of the sheet and you see the line in that bottom box that says actual slash projected annual growth, and you see under FY nineteen.
The very, very bottom.
Yeah, one seventy.
One seventy and two fifteen, the very, very bottom, the line from the bottom.
Okay.
So each year, we're multiplying that five thousand sixteen dollar figure.
Right.
By one seventy, and then by one fifteen, and then by one thirty-five, and by one fifty-six, and so on and so forth. And that's the figure, that multiplication is what goes into the growth factor line. So if we're predicting less students one year, the growth factor goes down, and if we're predicting more, it jumps back up.
Okay.
So yeah, two hundred and twenty more students next year than the current year.
It's not abating.
Yeah.
Can I ask, is there a typo?
Two fifteen.
Sorry.
It is two fifteen, not one fifteen?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, so growth.
I thought I heard one fifteen. I apologize.
Now, this year's growth was again larger than even their projections.
So can I just, I just one final question on that. So we expect the student population to increase every year through twenty twenty-four. Okay, okay. I got that piece of it. I'm sorry.
So below that, you'll see Minuteman, that's the operating and capital budget. We inflate that at three and a half percent a year. To be very specific, operating capital, that means that's what our operating assessment is to run the school year to year, as well as what they're assessing us for the school project. Those funds, a portion of those funds, excuse me, are being raised as exempt debt in the property tax line, but we account for them in the Minuteman line because we raise all those funds and then pay them to directly to Minuteman, not out of the capital budget. Below that, we start the town budget. We have personnel services and expenses. We then have our enterprise fund offsets leading down to a net town budget. Several years ago, we agreed to cap town growth at three and a quarter percent. When the plan was initiated in two thousand and eleven, we had said we would cap town growth at three and a half percent, but then several years ago, we reduced that to three and a quarter percent to try to continue to tighten and make the override last as long as possible. Directly below that, we have where we account for the expenditure for the MWRA debt shift, that five five nine three one one two. Below that, we have the capital budget. The top line is the exempt debt service. That's everything that's paid for via a debt exclusion, and that's where it's accounted for as an expense. Below that, we have our non-exempt debt service. That's everything that's part of the capital plan that's borrowed and paid for within the tax levy. And then below that, we have what we appropriate as cash, meaning it's just a direct expenditure from within the tax levy, capital monies that we don't borrow for. We then offset some of those with existing capital balances that are not expended that we roll forward, or some of the other offsets we take from enterprise funds or off-budget funds that we allocate monies from. Capital budget generally, the combination of non-exempt cash offset by those offsets and capital carryforward needs to be five percent of operating revenues, and that's the general rule of how we manage what capital expenditures will look like. Below that, we have pensions, which I described in response to Ms. Mahon's question earlier. Below that is the insurance line item. What we have in the insurance line item is an assumption that rates will go up by five and a quarter percent every year, but then we also add in an assumption that we will be hiring more staff in the school department based on enrollment growth. So each year, we look at how many new students are coming in, do a calculation for how many new teachers we think that will mean, add those as assumed contracts into the health insurance line item, and then budget what we think we'll need for health insurance. Below that, we have state assessments. That's the part where the state giveth a lot on the cherry sheet and then taketh some away. Most of that money is the MBTA assessment. There's some other small assessments on there, but that money all, we basically never really get that money. It's net of what they give us on the cherry sheet. We then have overlay reserve. That's the money we set aside every year for abatement requests when people ask to abate their property taxes. We set it at one point one five when we went and set the tax rate last year, but on a year over year basis, we set it at six hundred thousand for two years, and then every third year when we're in a revaluation, we bump it up to eight hundred thousand. Sort of part and parcel of that overlay conversation, I mentioned when we were talking about revenues, when we look at the possibilities of what to do with that overlay surplus I mentioned, we will consider whether or not we want to change our funding strategy here in the expense section and see if that's one of the ways we want to use that surplus rather than appropriating money or, not appropriating, excuse me, but setting aside money every year in overlay. Below that, we have the reserve fund. We now set aside a reserve fund that's one percent of the operating budget. The finance committee asked for that several years ago, and primarily, we started doing that and increased our reserve fund instead of setting aside snow deficit money every year. So we hope if the plan works, we've set aside enough within the operating budget and then within the reserve fund to cover snow and ice costs on a year over year basis within the operating budget instead of rolling those numbers forward to the next calendar year, the next fiscal year. Court judgments and Sims, we've talked about that. And then below that, we have warrant articles. Those are the miscellaneous appropriations that happen outside of the town's operating budget. The big number in there is what we put aside for OPEB every year. That's almost nine hundred thousand dollars a year. The remainder of those are, again, the smaller awards, ceremonies, flags on graves, the various warrant articles that are appropriated every year. So going down to the bottom, what you can see is we're projecting a balanced budget in FY nineteen through twenty, twenty-one, but then in FY twenty-two, we see a deficit of eleven million dollars emerging in FY twenty-two. And you can see that absent an override in FY twenty-two and beyond, there are pretty significant deficits to be able to, the town will need to think about how it wants to cover those deficits, either through revenue generation or expense reductions. So I guess before I ask Sandy to walk through the override scenarios that he's prepared, any more questions on expenses?
Yeah?
I'm just, A, confused at the very bottom of the second page, the attachment, and B, am I misreading it, and then C, the question would be, regarding the municipal building insurance trust fund. My question would be, you know, I understand this was a trust fund that basically the town didn't really touch for years, then we got some, you know, language to be able to access it. It's my understanding that that's a finite amount of money, and that money is being drawn down, but then when I look at the explanation, the way the sentence reads, it says a reserve fund to cover extraordinary losses to damage to town property. The existence of the fund reduces the town's annual property insurance costs because it allows the town to buy insurance policies, municipal building. So like, do those two go together, or is that, should there be some punctuation that's two different things? Because like, if you look at it, it says a reserve fund established to cover extraordinary losses from damage to town property. The existence of the fund reduces the town's annual property insurance costs because it allows the town to buy insurance policies, municipal building insurance trust fund with high deductibles. My thing is, I thought the municipal building insurance trust fund was a finite amount of money we're drawing down from it, but then when I read that sentence, is it something else?
So for one, the municipal building insurance trust fund wording down here is the header, and the sentence starts with our reserve fund, and then the sentence continues with high deductibles. So that's not part of the sentence, but that sentence is accurate. So that was a decision made, I don't know when, but long before I was here, to set aside monies in this municipal building insurance trust fund, which would allow the town to buy insurance policies that have a high deductible. So we have a hundred thousand dollar deductible for property loss. And I think it was three, maybe four years ago now, there was a flood in the high school based on frozen pipes, as well as the Pierce, which exceeded that hundred thousand dollar deductible, so we did request to make a withdrawal or an appropriation from the municipal building trust fund to pay for that. So that is how we use that. We set that aside. We don't use it for any other purpose unless there is a major loss that goes beyond the deductible, but our premiums are less on a year over year basis because we have that high loss deductible.
So it is a finite amount of money. It's something that we can, when appropriate, access funds from. And are we using the existence of that trust fund in terms of obtaining insurance policies or deductibles that give us a lower rate or no? That's just sort of.
Yeah, so what we can say is when, so our insurer, Maya, would say, if we said, oh, we will have a hundred thousand dollar deductible, they would say, well, how are you going to pay a hundred thousand dollars deductible if you have a loss? And we would say, well, we have a municipal building insurance trust fund. If we ever have a major loss, we are able to access those funds, and that's why we can have the deductible. So they would then rate that policy, acknowledging that higher deductible, and charges lower premiums on a year over year basis.
So it is a dual purpose. It's funds that are available, as well as we can use the trust fund in terms of justifying a deductible insurance policy that we need. I didn't realize it had a twofold purpose. Thank you.
Questions on expenses? Sandy? Oh, sorry, nope, too fast.
Very minor, very, very minor question, but I've looked at this so many times, and I've never answered. In computing the H, reserve fund, the definition says that's one percent of revenues, but revenues come in at one sixty, one two five seven. So I'm wondering what, something's excluded.
We exclude the override stabilization fund.
Okay, okay. Great, makes sense.
Hi, Sandy. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Glad to be here. So what, so what would happen if? That's what we're here to talk about.
We should start with Sandy Poehler, deputy town manager, and let's see, finance director in waiting?
Yes, exactly. Thank you. And so I'm here tonight to talk about what different scenarios would look like for having overrides at different years and at different amounts that would last different periods of time. So generally, in the past, Arlington has had overrides that were calculated to last anywhere from three to five years. And the reality fortunately has been over time that various things have happened that those overrides have lasted longer than that, but you always have to start with some assumption about how long things are going to last and be in balance. So that's what this sheet here is all about. It presents a series of what-ifs based on having an override in this coming June so that it would affect the FY twenty budget, or a year from this June, so it would affect the FY twenty-one budget. And so if we're just going down this page, what this is, is we have an interactive spreadsheet that's based on the long range plan, and we can plug in a bunch of what-ifs, and then it all flows through and calculates to show how much money would be, we would be putting into or taking out of the override stabilization fund, and therefore, how long that fund is going to last until it runs out. The very first top box shows the situation as it is today without any override, and that shows that, as a couple of people have mentioned, by FY twenty-two, we're going to have an eleven million dollar deficit. And going forward, FY twenty-three, that jumps up to seventeen million dollars, and then almost twenty-two million, twenty-six, and thirty-one million dollars. One of the reasons it jumps so much, by the way, between twenty-two and twenty-three is that in FY twenty-two, there's still a little bit of money in the fund to reduce the pay for our costs, but then after that, it goes away completely. So what I wanted to do is see how big an override we would need if we had an override before FY twenty, in other words, sometime between now and June twentieth, so to affect the FY twenty tax bills. And so scenario three, excuse me, scenario A is the three-year override. In other words, it would last for three years. If we did it next June, it would have to be three point seven million dollars. That would mean that the next time we'd have to have an override would be three years later, and we'd have to cover basically almost fourteen million dollars, thirteen million nine hundred forty-five thousand dollar gap in FY twenty-three. It would, based on current home values and the current single-family home. It would, based on current home values and the current single-family home value of $655,000, mean that the average single-family taxpayer would have a per household tax increase of $251,000, excuse me. Second scenario is...
I'm sorry, may I?
Yes, certainly.
For only one year?
Forever.
Okay, because it's...
It would bump up once and then stay, our taxes go up 2.5% a year and be...
The override stay, okay, okay, yeah, got you.
Scenario B is if we wanted to have an override that would last four years, it would then have to be $7.1 million. It would have a $481 per year impact on the average single-family homeowner. And it would mean that, again, by, at that point, FY '24, we would be facing a fairly big gap again of $14 million. And we'd have to do something between now and then to take that on. And then the one at the bottom says, "All right, let's say we want to go for five years." That would have to be $9.9 million. That would get us out to 2025 and have a $671 per year impact on the average single-family home. So so far, any questions about an override that would be put on ballot this coming June?
I have a question.
Yep.
Regarding the calculations on A, B, and C. Is this an appropriate? What I'm confused about, because I'm thinking of what people were looking at this, specifically my dad and my husband would say to me, "How do we go from a three-year override, we'd have to go for $3.7 million? If we went for a four-year override, we're close to doubles at $7.1 million."
Can I take a swing at that one?
Like, how do I explain that? You know what I mean?
Yeah, so if you look at, and this is actually a point, if you look at A, the three-year override, and look at the line that says stabilization fund use.
Fund use or deposit?
Yeah, exactly. And so, and notice how even in FY, if we do a three-year override, we're actually still spending money. We're not actually saving any money in that year. So part of what the message here is, especially in that scenario, is that like, our revenues and our expenses are so out of whack at this point that if we do a three-year override, we never actually save any more money. We only make our savings last longer. And so that's why it's such a big number from the three to the four.
And to take a different spin on that, what you see there, I think also, is our approximate $3 million a year structural deficit. So we, when you look at, it's hard to see the structural deficit when we're in the middle of a long-range plan because we have the override stabilization fund influencing it. But if you went back to the long-range plan, you'd see that in those last few years, the deficit grows by about $3 million a year. So this, these override figures also grow by just a little bit under $3 million a year. So I think that's also a little bit of what you're seeing there. Every time we're trying to cover a year, we're trying to cover that $3 million structural deficit.
Just one more question on stabilization fund use or deposit line. Those monies that are projected in there, whether they're in the red or the black, are monies that would come from a proposed three, four, or five-year override? Or is it monies that are from A, B, or C override plus pre-existing stabilization, override stabilization funds that are in there? So what I'm saying is, is it just that money's all spent down? Or some of that carried over? Or does that line, stabilization fund use, represent just the three-year, four-year, five-year override? Am I saying the question?
Yeah, and the answer is, yes, it's plus. So if you see where it says, the line above that is stabilization fund balance. We plan on finishing FY '19 with $20,905,000 in the bank. And so all of these scenarios include usage of that $20.9 million.
And how do we drop, let's just take A, three-year override. How do we drop with the existing stabilization fund balance from $11 million to $33,000? And it, you know, in the four-year override, it goes $10 million to $31,000, so on and so forth. What accounts for that?
What it is, so it's, the FY '20 deficit is $7 million? What was, I just had, we were just looking at it. So FY '20, is it seven, Sandy?
Or FY '21?
So in FY '20, we're going to have to pull out, if you look at the very top, we would have to use $6.1 million in stabilization fund just to keep even if we didn't have an override.
So think of it as 20.9 minus 6.1 plus 3.7 is how you get to the 18.4.
How do we go from $11 million to $33,000?
So...
Twenty-one to twenty-two. Where am I missing the columns at?
Oh, 21 to 22.
See, if we go three, option A, if we, FY '20...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I mean, how do we go from $11 million, $11 million plus in the stabilization fund balance to $33,000? If I look at what you're saying up above, I still don't get to $33,000. How do I, and I'm challenged by math.
That's the delta between, in FY '21, you see the stabilization fund balance of 11,165,735?
Yes.
And then we're saying we need to use, in FY '22 in that scenario, 11,132,092, leaving the balance of 33,643.
Okay. I can see the math now. I apologize. Thank you.
It's a good question.
That's why we're doing it. Let's...
I'm done. Thank you.
So some people have asked, do we need to do an override as early as FY '20? What if we put it off a year? That gets us to the next page. And that is, what if we were to have an override a year from now? In other words, June of 2020, let's say. Or something that would start to have an impact on FY '21 budget. And what you see immediately is that by waiting a year, the numbers go up a lot. So to have a three-year override by waiting a year, you have to have a $9.6 million override. As opposed to doing it a year earlier, it's 3.7. So there's, waiting means that we've eaten into the override stabilization fund one more year without replenishing it or slowing down its use. And so it vastly increases the size of the override. So a four-year override would be $12.5 million. And a five-year override would be $15 million. Those start to get to be pretty big numbers. These are estimates. I think they're pretty accurate in terms of comparative ranges and give you a sense of some of, what some of the impacts of choices are going to be as to both when to have an override and how long to try to make it last. These things will continue to be updated as we go forward, as we set the tax rate, when we find out about next year's state aid and so forth. We'll continue to adjust these things. But I think it gives you a pretty good sense of what the world of choices are about override this year or next year, three, four, or five years. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Kevin?
My head hurts, but... So let's take the scenario where we wait until 2021. And the average single-family tax impact is 661? Am I reading that right?
$651.41.
$651.47. Add the school debt cost to the home for me.
So that, right now, our estimate is a little over $800. So it'd be about $1,400 in round figures.
Am I right? We're thinking of doing these together?
Well, I think that's the conversation.
All right.
But to be clear, that number's not together. That number is separating them a year.
Say it again?
The 651 would be doing them in separate years. The key number is to compare, to do them in the same year, you'd look at the figures on the first sheet, the first three scenarios.
Okay.
To do them a year apart, Scenarios D, E, and F, we'd use those figures.
Meaning, we know we have to do the debt exclusion in '20?
Correct.
Okay.
'19, well, 420.
Yeah, for the 20 fiscal years.
Yes.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, Dan and I have had the benefit of having this presentation on long-range planning. And we actually have a lot of decisions on our plates here. So one that I think Mr. Greeley hit on, I mean, one is the timing. I think for a while, we've talked about timing in terms of the logistics of mounting a campaign. Does it make the most sense to launch one campaign? Huge, we've all been involved in these. It's a huge mobilization of volunteers. So does it make sense to go out together and do that in one shot rather than having to have two campaigns, you know, potentially one year after another? And, you know, I think we can kind of, that's one of the things we're going to have to gauge as we take it. Another thing we're going to have to gauge is what the sticker shock is on this. And we see there's a wide range here based on these scenarios. I mean, ranging from, you know, 251,09 on the low end to over 1,000 on the high end of these six scenarios that we're looking at. That's the sticker shock just for the general overrides. That's something we're going to have to consider, I think, as a board. The next thing we're going to have to consider is the longevity. I mean, how soon do we want to have to come back to the voters after doing this? I mean, do we want to be having to come back in three years again? Is it death by a thousand cuts? I mean, we swung some good breaks and had some great management. And we've stretched out the last one for just about a decade. Will that happen again? We don't know what's going to happen in the economy. I mean, we're, we've, we haven't had a recession in 10 years either. And that's fairly unusual. So that's another thing that we're going to have to consider, I think, as a board. We're also going to have to consider some policy choices. So we've discussed here issues around the debt shift, the MWR debt shift. And how can we employ that to try to alleviate some sticker shock? People still going to have to pay their water and sewer bills, but that's really kind of a distribution issue. I mean, who's going to end up paying that? Probably larger homes that are benefiting from the high school or whatnot. That, we can suppose that, right? We'll also have another policy choice. We considered, last year, we considered the circuit breaker action on the warrant. And I think we had pretty much committed in our comments that we would come back in the next annual town meeting, and we would consider that. Again, that's an issue of distribution, too. I mean, seniors or those who are really strapped, it could help them, but it does shift some of the burden there. So that's another thing that we're going to have to consider. So, and against all of this, there are the big variables of the economy and the variables of what the impact of federal tax changes are going to be. You know, we know that that impacted deductibility of property taxes for folks. And so potentially, we pushed some folks over that threshold. And we also have a variable, I mean, I think we could probably get our hands around this a bit. But remember, when we go out for the high school debt exclusion, even though that's an $800 number, that doesn't hit immediately. That'll hit somewhere, you know, a few years out, once the project is finally underway. So we're going to have to gauge what's the impact going to be on someone. We have to make the case for the high school and for the general override, realizing that somebody's going to see only part of what we can control right up front. And the other piece is going to be a little bit down the road. So we're going to be prepared for those types of questions. So when we...
Joe, I'm sorry. I don't follow why the debt exclusion doesn't hit till down the road.
Because it doesn't, we don't put it on the levy until we're actually expending the funds on the capital project.
Right.
So because it'll take a couple of years for the design of the high school until we're really getting into serious costs around construction and such.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We wouldn't be hitting it.
Okay, sorry.
So these are all of the types of things that we're going to have to balance. So think about it, I mean, think about this scenario. I mean, I look at this and obviously, oh, of course, I want the lowest, I want the lowest number, 251. That's great, and it's, you know, it's the three-year one, and that's great. And that reduces sticker shock. But we've got to keep in the back of our minds that if we do that, we do run the risk of having to go back to the voters on a general override at the time that we're starting to hit the tax bills with the high school project. So there are all of these variables in the air. And I think that we have really more than one decision. We probably have about half a dozen different decisions that would be part of the package that we go out. Not even talking about what types of service commitments we make when we go out to the voters. Traditionally, and we all know this, when we've gone out to the voters on general overrides, we've made commitments around how long we'll go before we go back to the voters. But we've also made commitments around service levels in certain areas. Well, yeah, or, you know, roads. I think we put some extra in for roads the last time and such. So these are all of these choices that I think that we face. This is going to be a tough community conversation. Sorry, I didn't mean to go on for so long. It's just, this has been way...
I've got a few points. Do you want to go?
So just quick, because I'm still trying to wrap my, get acclimated to the figures and whatnot. But I look at this and think, all right, like Joe said, great, three-year override, looks good. 250, it's much better than 481 or 671. Do we have a way, as part of the analysis, to look at what, after three years, it could be projected to be on a subsequent override?
Yeah, so look up in the field where it says surplus, the line right above it. You see the red number, 13, 9, 17, 8, 22, 8?
Yeah.
Take the average of those three numbers, which is pretty much the middle one, 17, 8.
Okay.
So if we were to do consecutive three years, they would be 3.7 and 17.8. Is that about right, Sandy? No, you just couldn't hear it?
Yeah.
I'm kidding. It was a joke. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I get it. No, it makes more sense.
Yeah.
It's just because that makes the, certainly makes the longer overrides more attractive if presented to voters in that fashion. So I think it would help us to have a set figure. If we could calculate based on the 17, 8, what we think that additionally will, when we go to get the 17, 8, you know, you're going to be 250 for three years, but then you're going to go up $800 or whatever it is for the three years after that. So if you look at the 671, looks a lot better as an option if we can have that figure to present to people.
So that goes really well into the point that I wanted, I have a sheet, two or three things I wanted to talk about. One is when Sandy and Adam and the Finance Committee and everybody make these budgets, they write them in a way that I would describe as conservatively. So sometimes when you're making a prediction, you make your best prediction, and then you say, "Half the time, I'm going to be too high, and half the time, I'm going to be too low." And you know, your prediction is good if it's 50/50. Budgeting, you don't look at it that way. You don't look at it as half the time, we're over budget, and half the time, you're under budget. You write the budget such that 99.9% of the time, you're, because we don't have a way to miss underneath. So what that means is that our, from year to year to year, we often end up to the good. You know, like, our budgets, like, we have a million here, a million there. And that is particularly true when the economy and the state are both good to us, which has been true lately. Whereas if you look at, you know, around the first five-year plan, which is when I was on the Finance Committee and the quote-unquote lines plan was, you know, the first one, we weren't missing, we were all to the good all the time. We had some bad years. And so that really, I think, for instance, for people like Al Tosti and Charlie Foskit, and, you know, that was, those led to like, some seriously conservative budgets. And so you can look at all of these plans. And in one, and if you look at our last eight years, you say, "I don't have to worry about it. These are all conservative, and we're actually going to be better off than this." And what that, and maybe even as much as like, a million or two million a year. And so that means that like, you know, and that million, two million a year also... means that, like, you know, and that million, 2 million a year also, like, compounds. So, like, that 17 million might actually be, like, 12 or 10 or something like that, if our budgets continue to get, to come into the good. But, as I said, I think so much of that is sensitive to a recession. And then, because a recession hurts us in all regards. Some, like, we get less state money, we get less excise tax, we get more unemployment. We, like, we have tons and tons of problems. And so, on one, and the recession hurts in another way, which is, it makes it harder to sell an override to voters, because who wants to vote a tax increase in the middle of a recession? And these are, those two factors are the things that I am really wrestling with myself right now. And I have said before that I've been in favor of doing both override votes on the same day, like, the debt exclusion and the operating override. At the most recent long-range planning meeting, it was clear that we don't have a total unanimous consensus on that. There are some people who really think that we should do the high school. Like, we have unanimous, I believe, at the table, do the high school. What is not unanimous is whether or not we should be going for an operating override at the same time. And so, one thing we could do is we could wait a year or two, maybe even two, on the override. And then, it will actually, if, you know, things turn, if the budgets go a little bit to the good, we could actually vote a smaller number in a couple of years than what we think it is right now. On the other hand, if we have a recession between now and then, it's really ugly. I don't have an answer. But, so, I am personally currently conflicted about what we should do. We don't have to decide tonight. We're not deciding tonight. Kevin?
Are you done?
Yes.
It's just something I've thought about ever since we've always talked about this possibility of putting them both on the ballot. My worry is if we put them both on the ballot, and the voter goes in there and says, I'm gonna vote for one, but I won't vote for both, I think easily, well, in my opinion, they would vote for the high school. And I think to sell the high school is the easier, I mean, all of us here are veterans of override campaigns, so, and debt exclusion. We've been there, done that. So, anyhow, I just worry putting them together gives people a choice. And I think if they make the choice, and probably, I hate to say it, rightly so, for the high school, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I would vote for both, but, I mean, so anyhow, we're just, are we better to have battles two years apart, you know?
Kevin?
I think you hit the nail on the head with one of the issues. I mean, if sentiment were to turn against one or the other, does it potentially sink them both? That's a question.
Oh, that neither passes?
Oh, that neither, yeah. Is it easier to sell just one issue? The other question we have to ask ourselves is the amount of risk that we're willing to absorb. With the high school, if that thing doesn't pass, I don't think we see high school in our lifetimes. We don't see a new high school. It's gone. That's a one-shot deal. With the general override, the way things are trending now, we have, you know, potentially, the next year and possibly the following year if it fails. So, possibly, there's a way to go back and restate the case and try again. So, that, those are the things that we, yeah. It's a really good point, Kevin, because I've been kind of with Dan has been, where all along, I've just assumed, of course, we'll go out together, but I'm not 100% there anymore.
Dan?
I promised my last point on this, and I understand...
This is a good conversation. You roll as long as you need.
As the chair said, we're not making any decisions tonight. But, this is gonna be my own personal opinion, not saying anybody else disagrees or agrees. I think what we really need to do right now, we're not discussing what should be together or not be together, is really be task-oriented. I'm very concerned about, because I've been following the discussions around the high school. We went through all the public hearings that we had. The four different options were put forth. The committee, which is a combination of town and school officials, administrators, et cetera, voted on an option, I think it was 3A was the one. From all the information that I've been gathering, as well as, and I purposely stayed away from those meetings because of my personal family schedule, as well as, I used to go to all the school stuff, and they just don't listen to me. So, I could go in and tell them, this wall is blue, and they won't believe me. And I've learned, pick the battle you can fight. But, what I've become concerned with is on the, and I've had this conversation with the town manager, I'm not saying he agrees with me, but I, the reason I had the conversation with him is because he's going to, amongst all the other meetings he goes to, he's going to all of these meetings, the group made a decision moving forward to that. My big concern is to get task-oriented on, this is what we're gonna do. I am still hearing and reading from these community meetings after the decision was made, on the school side, superintendent and one or two others. My thing would be, what do you want, Mahan, if we can get this project under 300 million and hopefully get the 45% reimbursement? And, you know, and then if we go for something in the future that a legislative delegation can pick up on it? I, correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I've been reading and hearing and calling people, including a couple of our colleagues on the school committee, there's still a drum beating to try to get it back to that option one, increase the cost. I don't hear us speaking from one voice. So, I don't mean to put the town manager on spot, and you don't have to answer to that, but to me, that's very dangerous. Like, what I wanna do is get the most manageable high schools, see what that looks like, see what the impact is to the voters. But, if they're hearing, you know, and, you know, when I first got on the board, there were things that I thought it should have been done one way, and the vote went four to one. In the end, it went the way that I wanted to go, but it wasn't the way that I wanted. But, once a decision is made, you have to coalesce around that. I'm not seeing that, and I'm very concerned about that. So, I don't mean to put, if the manager would like to speak to that or anybody else, but I have grave concerns about that. And I have spoken to a couple of our colleagues on the school committee about that.
I actually, I wanna take a swing at that. I think that there is a really good school committee, school building committee. It has some really talented people. It has John Cole, it has the superintendent, it has Adam, it has Brian Rarick, it has Kate Lujan, it has smart, capable, willful people who are, ask questions, and they ran a really good public process that got a lot of input. And this building is gonna have something that we all, like, it is a building of compromises. No one is getting the building they want, and we're all going to be able to find something in that building that we hate. We're all gonna find something that we hate. And exactly like, you're right, people have to, we, once that process is done, people have to coalesce around it. And I think the school building committee has done a good job of trying to, and there is a group of people who have dug in their heels and said, no, I want what I want regardless of how that compromise ended up. And I think the school building committee is working hard to bring them into the fold and has not entirely succeeded. I'm sure they're succeeding with some of the members of that group, and I think there's some of those members that they're not gonna get over the finish line. But, I don't think we or them can be held hostage by somebody who just digs in their heels. Like, we have, from my perspective, so, some of those people came to me and said, Dan, I'm really unhappy with this. And so, I went back, and I looked at the committee, and I looked at the process they ran, and I said, this is a good committee, and they ran a good process. And I am absolutely in favor of supporting that outcome.
I'm talking about the superintendent and a few others that, I'm just seeing a different...
Kevin?
I don't see one speaking voice on that, so...
Well, John's hand is up, and I have spoken, but...
No, I just, to speak to that...
Thank you.
I, we've all seen the same comments that people have, and I think in the, as we're in the design phase, this is where the most disagreement's gonna come as far as the building. But, it still seems to me that universally, from the people that I talk to, whether you like the design or not, you know that the people understand that there, we need a new building. So, once we have a design that comes together, these people, I don't, that we're talking about, from my perspective, I don't think they're gonna not vote for the new high school based on the fact that it wasn't the exact design that they wanted, that they advocated for during this stage of the process.
Adam?
Just a very brief response to Ms. Mahan. I certainly can't vote for the other 17 members of the committee, but I have confidence that at least a majority, if not more than a majority of the committee members, understand the need to get that number as low as responsibly can be brought, as low as it can be responsibly brought down. And I think people also have a very clear understanding that that $300 million threshold is meaningful, at least in the minds of voters, if not meaningful, you know, in the actual impact on taxpayers. But, I think we're working towards what you're trying to get towards.
But, will you give me that? I'm not talking about people who are not on the 17-member committee. I understand, save our historic one and our historic columns, none of those are historic, graduate 1980. It's the first brick building that I call the column house. Nothing else is historic. I'm talking about the current 17 members.
No, that's who I'm referring to. I'm confident.
But, there are, my thing is, I just wanted to lay my concerns that, and everyone thinks I have a beef with the superintendent, that's fine. But, and I don't know how the town manager for us or anyone else can do that, but I'm very concerned because it's getting out in the community that the decision has been made, but several influential members at that committee who are not from the town side are still trying to beat, to get option one and get, you know, a 320, 323 million dollar project back on the table. I mean, you must have heard that because you go to those meetings.
Yeah. I mean, to be very direct, you're referring to a comment that the school, high school principal made when 3A was selected, saying, I would hope that we could get back up towards the expenditures that option one we're predicting, which was in that 320-plus million dollar range. I'll speak for myself, and I think Sandy would agree, as a committee member, we will do everything we can to prevent that from happening.
Right. And I just raise this to my colleagues on the board, that when we're speaking with our colleagues on the school committee, that we all have that same information, not that we don't, and we say to them, what is it that we, I mean, at some point, and I've been in this position, at some point, you have to say, okay, decision's been made, I'm 100% behind it. If you have a superintendent and the high school principal who are going against that, that's gonna jeopardize any debt exclusion that we have for the high school, because, you know, when you don't speak with one voice when a decision has been made. And that's my concern. And I think honestly, every other member of this board probably has more sway with the majority of the school committee than I do. And that's the reason I raise the point. I think we need to, just like when I first got on the board and I learned the lesson that, you know what, when a decision's made, you go behind it because it's the best thing to do. So, that's why I raise it. So, but I'll leave it at that. I beat that dead horse twice.
Kevin?
Well, Jess, I mean, from what I'm familiar with, that 17-member committee took a vote unanimously not to reconsider, not to move backwards at this point in time. But, that said, Diane expresses, is just an example of, you know, there is a group out there very upset that the columns are going, that that historic, you know, how vocal do they become during the vote? But, Joe, something you said, so, the debt exclusion is defeated, all right?
If the debt exclusion...
No, no, I know. I don't want this to happen. I'm asking the question, if it's defeated, we have to provide a high school. What happens? The town is to, what?
I think we're on the hook to pay for it ourselves if we would have...
100%, just like the Thompson thing.
So, I think, I don't know this for certainty, but I think the MSBA would probably give us one more chance to get a debt exclusion passed. They would likely, you know, to not have the whole project evaporate, they would probably, I don't know what they would say, but maybe a 30, 60, 90-day extension. I would hope they would give us that opportunity to recalibrate and ask the voters again. Beyond that, I mean, God bless.
God bless.
If there was a fatal flaw in the community, was not willing to support the expenditure, then yes, then renovations or some other large-scale project would be on, would be fully on the back of the taxpayers in Arlington without the support of the state. And though it might not be a $300 million project, it would probably still be a very, very significant project that might end up still having more of an impact on the taxpayers than the larger project in the absence of state reimbursement.
I just wanna add to that, that you couldn't accommodate the number of students that are gonna come there just by renovating the current building. So, there would have to not only be significant upgrade to the current structure, which we already know from our people who come in to accredit the school, have said is inadequate. So, you have to make the current buildings better. But, with more kids coming, there needs to be more space. So, it would be both complicated, hard to figure out where you put more space, and quite expensive.
Say inadequate's probably the lightest term I've heard to describe the current condition of the high school.
So, do we have more thoughts or points we wanna talk about on this one?
No, I'd like to announce I'm stepping down. Rather than facing these decisions.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for putting this on the agenda, because it allows us this conversation at 8:30 to 9:30 versus 10:30 to 11:45.
Yeah.
I'm glad that worked.
Many more to come.
Yes.
I'm glad that worked out a lot.
But, I, well, sorry, but there is many more discussions to come.
Absolutely.
Clearly, we, we all need to find a way where we are united as a select board. We don't have a chance, in my opinion. If we put on the ballot, we're always asked to lead these, and so, let's get there.
Amen.
Amen. All right. I don't think we need to take a vote unless there's anything else I'm gonna declare that item closed and move on to new business. Mrs. Karpelka?
The only thing I want you to take this and look at it, if you have any comments for the warrant, for the draft, so that we can finish it. And I can, people have called from residents wanting a copy of it, and I haven't given it to them yet until after you look at it, to make sure we're not gonna make any changes.
Okay.
So, if you can just call me by Friday, and I can release it to the people that ask.
While we're talking about the warrant, I'm gonna go out of order, and I'm gonna say that on the, I've got on my desk a calendar here that I hadn't thought all the way through, but now that I've seen it written out, now it makes sense to me. So, we're going to have hearings on the warrant articles on October 22nd, which is our next meeting. And there's four that we're gonna be doing hearings on recreational marijuana excise tax, bylaw amendment for the Rainbow Commission, bylaw amendment for certain personnel, which is what, you know, we're changing for the treasurer to be appointed, and the comptroller to be appointed, and so on and so forth, and the change to the bill for scholarship fund that Dean Carmen proposed. So, we're gonna do hearings on those on October 22nd, which leads us to final votes on November 14th. And so, that obviously is coming up really fast for the special, so I wanted to call that out.
And I'm hoping that you're gonna join us, or most of you will join us on Tuesday night for the Town Day Appreciation Party.
Will the Red Sox game be on?
That's gonna be tough.
Yeah.
If it is, just, I think most of them will be staying home.
Oh, there's a game Tuesday.
What time?
I don't know yet.
They have lots of big screen TVs down there.
I assume we'll be on the rendezvous.
They have many TV cameras down there. They'll all be sitting at the bar watching it. You can join them, no problem.
All right.
At the salad bar, you mean? Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Either one.
That's just one more reason it's a shame the Red Sox won. No new business.
You were out for...
Trying to disrupt Town Day celebrations.
You missed my...
Do you wanna talk about Aaron Boone or not?
You missed my opening, you missed my opening quote. Adam?
That was fun.
Hey, what's that?
That was fun, right?
That was fun.
The only piece of new business I'll mention is, as the board knows, the Bus Robert Transit Pilot launched yesterday. Yesterday? Yeah, yesterday. And we're having an official launch that I think a few of you will be able to make next week on October 16, 16:80 a.m. in front of Zaa. But, the best news being, Zaa is gonna be offering some of their brunch pizza that they only offer on the weekends on Tuesday morning. So, if you were thinking about coming, it'd be a very nice event to attend. That's all I have.
Can I just ask a question on that? Because I was down there, and I saw Mr. Ademaka also walking the length of it. Where are we gathering the information from in terms, I mean, I went down there, and I looked at it, and I said, well, if I'm on a bicycle...
looked at it and I said, well, if I'm on a bicycle, this is a great success and I'm whizzing into work. And just from people that I've seen that have posted on, oh, Brian Restatia, it's a, it's a Safe Streets or something like that, said, you know, saved him about a minute on the bus. My question is, who is gathering the information in terms of the pilot program, if it's working and for what community it's working for, and whom are they speaking to? Like, is that something Mr. Rodamaka is doing, you know, walking down the Ave, talking to people from the police department and whomever? Is there somebody from MBTA that's kind of gathering that information that, you know, whatever trip times, like, who's?
So it's really all of the above. We'll be surveying riders, all MBTA riders, to see what their experience is. We're using that Waze Connected Citizens Program that the board endorsed us applying for several months ago. Jim Feeney and Dan Amstutz, the new transportation planner, have been tracking each morning and will continue to track over the course of the month, how, what that program actually lets you do is look at traffic at any given time and see how it compares to the normal commute. It normalizes the data. So we'll be looking at that every day to see how the overall commute, which would be the vehicles are, what their commute is like compared to the normal commute, you know, the average commute. We'll be tracking MBTA data to see what the bus time saved is and we'll be talking with the police throughout the process. And we hope to be able to wean the police presence off to see how this can behave without the presence of, or such a, such a big presence of police officers.
I know, because that's a big cost.
Yeah, so we're, we're actually, we're, planning is meeting with them tomorrow to discuss the first few days of the pilot. So we're, we're really trying to grab data from wherever we can to measure it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you don't need my testimony?
I'd love it.
You'll get it later, but anyway, sorry, thank you.
Anything else, Adam?
That's all I have.
Kevin.
Yeah, thank you. So first, to all of those on Facebook and LinkedIn and email and phone that wish me a happy birthday and happy anniversary, thank you. I'll never be able to answer all of them. I don't know how half the time, but there's literally just too many. But the other thing is, I'd like to remind people that we we are in the process, we have a committee together for the Select Board Awards, which we give out about every five years. You know, tonight we had, what, seven or eight new appointments to committees, examples of volunteers who have given time to Arlington. And, you know, I just encourage people, please think about an individual or or a committee or an organization that you know, that you feel should be recognized by this board, there'll be a ceremony, there's five different awards, there'll be a ceremony later in November, I'm sorry, I forget the date off the top of my head, but go to the town website and there's a link about these awards or contact the Select One's office. But, you know, for example, in the past, the Transportation Advisory Committee was given an Outstanding Service Award. Last time it was the Finance Committee. So it could be a committee or it can be an organization, but, you know, please think about that and nominate people to this committee that you think are worthy of awards. Thank you.
Dan.
As briefly as I possibly can, and had this conversation with the town manager, but just because in light of National Grid, Columbia Gas, National Grid, and now the DPU moratorium that they've imposed, only because I've had other people come up to me who've said, oh, you know, the town of Arlington, you set up a process that I can get, you know, non-emergency, non-grade-one work done. And the town manager can correct me if I'm wrong, I did query him of that, that the DPU moratorium on any National Grid work in Arlington or the Commonwealth supersedes any sort of moratorium that we put in place, is that correct?
Correct.
And and one of the things that I am really thankful for, and I thank my colleagues for allowing to put in when we amended, we took from Attorney Hein what he submitted to us and everybody agreed acquiesced or whatever about putting in the DPU inspectors in there, that's exactly what the DPU, Department of Public Utilities, moratorium is. And the reason why, from my own personal knowledge, is National Grid or any other gas company, they grade their leaks, emergency leaks are grade one. Now that they're using their replacement workers, it's pretty well-known in the in the union workforce that what National Grid, to my understanding only, is doing, whenever they have a grade-one emergency leak of their replacement workers, in my words, they send out the best of the best. So you know that they're still not, which is what they should have been doing, going out with a DPU inspector, but it's pretty much known, you know, you have more success with getting replacement workers that definitely are capable and can handle that sort of thing. It's the grade-two and three leaks, which is where you're getting, in my opinion, the lesser trained, if at all, trained for trench work and being in there. And that's where you're getting these grade-two and grade-threes, where they're overcharging, surcharging, overpressurizing, which is, I'm going to tell you, I'm from the phone company, but I'm from crafts, that's a basic mistake you don't make. I know they're saying human error, all things like that happen, that's a mistake you don't make because people can get seriously injured, property can, and people can get harmed or killed. So I I don't play with that. And 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 then the other thing is, I'll just say, in the past, when we've had the qualified workers going out there, in my opinion, from National Grid and the like, where DPU inspectors should have been there and wasn't, and that's more of a government, you know, the governor, there should have been eight to thirteen of them, there's three and one's been out on a extended leave and will continue to be, so there's only two for the state. I think what happened was it just became known in the industry and across the Commonwealth that because we had qualified workers out there, even though a DPU inspector should have been there, you didn't have to worry about someone making one of the stupidest mistakes about surcharging or overpressurizing the system. That's not the case anymore. So I know, and the reason I say that is, not from my colleagues, but, you know, I've had people come at me from the very beginning, you know, pre-National Grid, Woben, pre-Columbia Gas, Lawrence, Andover, North Andover, oh, you're just making this in a union issue. And I'm like, no, it truly is myself coming from a craft, a public safety concern, and not just for, you know, someone coming in saying, can you give me that exemption from the moratorium? You've got to think about the neighbors and or businesses around that, that if something did happen, that say, why did you do that to us? So I'm very thankful that, you know, at our last meeting, all of us really came together and basically voted in or endorsed a moratorium that the DPU has now issued statewide. So I think it just, because I don't know if any of you are getting any grief, not that you do stuff to say, I don't want to get grief, I will get grief, but I think, I just want to say it was a forward-thinking decision that obviously DPU is now handling the same way and I'm grateful for that. Done.
John.
I just wanted to comment briefly on the Bus Rapid Transit Program. I went there yesterday. I, from what I saw, it was great. It wasn't just the bicycles. I saw a couple buses fly through in front with the traffic load, I think it was, they saved much more than a minute, so just good work to the people involved and, you know, I've had a few, some public input, both positive and negative, and I think, you know, be.
That's, that started yesterday?
Yes.
Five AM.
Wow, wow. I thought it was next week, but that, yeah.
That's the free brunch, that's a free piece of brunch.
Sorry, John, yeah.
But I am, I do anticipate, I am excited to hear the results and the feedback from the people, but I think from what I saw, it it looked like it it's a success. I just want to comment briefly on the, with the closure of the beer garden. You know, I think we had a tough stretch in the middle of the summer there, but I think from the beer gardens that we had, I'd like to thank Aaron and I, I think they put on a, a good program, it was well-run, no issues that I know of arose during the beer garden. And a lot of people that were against it are now, now look back and say that it was a success and hopefully the numbers that we get from that, from planning show that it also helped our businesses, so.
No new business. I don't have anything either. Our next meeting is October twenty-second.
Move to it, John.
Second. How was the fair press say aye?
Aye.
Very adjourned.